Here we go.
All right.
The way it goes is either we sit here for weeks and weeks and weeks and nobody's here.
You can tell it's important to people, that's for sure. And that's one of the things.
No, it's great. It's great. And ultimately, this is a constructive thing. This is a great project.
So Linda Letty, I think is going to be taking the lead kind of on. She wants Conservation to be the main people as far as finding regulations to use.
Yeah, she and I spoke a lot. She usually ends up taking the lead.
I sent her four towns, their regulations that were recommended by Old Colony as being.
This is on sand and gravel.
Some point recreated.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, so I sent those to her and I said, "Old Colony said these were standouts."
And actually, I'm going to bring that up tonight because I want my fellow selectmen to agree that it's all right for Linda and Amy to work on that. They are incre-- each of them, as you probably already know, are incredibly competent.
I have a whole different bird of them though because there are some other things that they need action on tonight, not to do with sand and gravel. Our open space.
Great. So I'm just going to blab for a while and then, well, and then, yeah, we want to bring everyone else in.
All right, we'll get started here. All right, so we had a brief executive session at 5:30. So we're now in open session. So I'll first announce that this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. I always forget to read that. Okay, so we are taking that Atwood property update out of order. We've got a group of people that are here to hear about it. So we decided to do this first so that if you wanted to get in and out, you'd have the ability to do that. So Mark, can I turn things over to you for an Atwood property update?
So I guess a bunch of things to say. I think we originally thought this would be a kind of brief update and it's so rare that this room gets filled and we're thrilled you're all here. But I think the easiest thing for me to do is just to ramble for about five or 10 minutes and then there'll be chance for board of selectmen to comment and public to comment. So like last week, first of all, most importantly, just a reminder, this isn't an official public hearing, which is a whole separate process and there's going to be no vote to approve or deny tonight sand and gravel permits nor right of first refusal. That's going to be way down the road. Right now, we don't even know if we have valid applications or the process needed to even start thinking about that. But clearly, there'll be a public hearing before any vote and part of the public hearing process is that it's publicized in the newspaper for a couple of weeks and of course, there's always our agenda. So no one should be worried that anything's going to happen unbeknownst to the general public. So just a quick overview of the things I want to talk about, a couple of updates and developments, a few comments for me, and then I want, I think I have six action steps that I hope the board will at least consider along the way tonight. So in terms of new developments since last week, we did contact town council. We're expecting from town council a letter laid out this week to be sent to the landowner confirming our understanding that we don't have the necessary stuff yet from them to start a, the clock on a four-month right of first refusal. So we expect we'll have that later this week and we expect we'll get that to the landowner by later this week. So that's thing one. Thing two, along the way, there have been some concerns about the plot plan, both some owner unknown land, and that was mentioned last week. The assessor's office is still working on that. There also seem to be some parcels that may be owned by butters that are included in the plot plan that's been given to us. So all that has to work its way through and that alone may take quite a while before any action can be taken on this. Next piece, and I'll come back to this in a minute, but Linda Letty and Amy Cronin of both the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Commission, Open Space Committee have volunteered to research what other towns have done in terms of a sand and gravel bylaw and they're going to, well, I'm presenting that to the selectmen tonight and actually will be one of the action steps for them to just sort of give their wave of approval for those guys to work on that and see where we get to. I'll come back to that in a minute. And then lastly, on updates, I have put together a, or stolen really, a sample select board land policy process, which is a four-page document that essentially puts forth a procedure when we are confronted with chapter land and the right of first refusal. And so what I want to do is just present that to the town administrator and the board of selectmen. This comes from a document called Conservation and Land Use Planning and it's all about Chapter 61. And really what I want to do is simply present that to the board of selectmen to consider over the next couple of weeks. And I think when we meet next, I'd love to solicit your opinions and then potentially present this to town council as a guide for moving forward on any new chapter and right of first refusals that we have. The way this document's put together is actually pretty neat. They incorporated into it mass state law in italics and then put into it the individual stuff the town might do. So long and short of it, it's there for you guys to look at. I hope we can bring it up in a couple of weeks and move forward on it. One of the nice things that's come out of this, I think, albeit there's been some confusion along the way, is it's become very clear to us that we need a clear policy for future when we get rights of first refusal. And to this point, we do not have clear policy on how to move forward with sand and gravel permits. So in the proactive level, what all this has brought is that we'll, I think we'll have a much better understanding and clearer procedure in the future. So those are the developments I know about. Just a few offhanded comments, just my comments. I believe that there's plenty of potential to save or protect most or all of the land we're talking about, tons of potential. It's going to take a long time to sort this out. When we did Cato's Ridge in Churchill Park, it was about a six-year process for a few of us in town. A fair part of our lives and a huge part of our equanimity was gone for three or four years to get the whole thing done. We know it takes a long time, but there's just tons of potential for this to work out. We're really early in the, early in the process and there are about 18 million, there are 18 moving parts that all have to come together. There's a bunch of ways to do this. There are potentially CPC funds involved if we went that way. There are a lot of other ways to do it. What's pretty clear to me is, I think, as a couple of these things this week get moving along, I'm going to make a proposal that potentially we see about getting an appraisal, but I'll come to that in a couple of minutes. So I think that was all my comments. Six action steps that I'd like to at least be considered tonight. Well, number one, we're just waiting for town council for a letter certifying that the right of first refusal clock hasn't started. And so I think maybe on that one, well, let me give you all six and then we'll come back to them. Number two, I think once that letter goes out, I would very much like to contact the landowners so that the board of selectmen at least have some direct contact as well along the way. Not to negotiate anything, but merely to set up lines of communication and hopefully build some trust as, as we move forward with the process. As I said, I'll come back to the appraisal again in a minute. Actually, I'll come back to that now. Two years ago at town meeting, the CPC recommended to town meeting and town meeting approved an article which granted $30,000 in CPC funds to the Open Space Committee for preliminary work on potential open space preservation. And the article mentions and includes stuff like attorney fees and particularly appraisal. So if we were to go ahead with appraisal, not right at this moment, but after we've gotten the process started, there is CPC money available and approved by town meeting already. And so I hope tonight, my fellow selectmen will okay Linda and Amy working on a sand and gravel bylaw. And then lastly, I think as soon as that certifying letter goes out, as I understand it through town administrator, our town council will then begin to help us work on a sand and gravel procedure, a separate from, application procedure, separate from any bylaw that we might make. Last thing I want to say, I know I'm rambling a little, but just want to get all the words out there. One thing the board of selectmen has to do, of course, is be fair to all citizens. We know there are a lot of people in the room that want to preserve this land. I think we also know there are landowners that are trying rightfully to garner the benefit of the land they own. So I think we all clearly understand, we have to remember that we represent all citizens and so there. So I guess back to the beginning, what I'd like to do is, since it may be two weeks until we meet again, Liz and I spoke earlier today that we expect this draft letter from town council and we're hoping for sort of a provisional approval or if we have any concerns about it, that we direct it to Liz and then if we're okay, that we're able to sign that later this week, even before we have another meeting.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
So that's a motion, I guess.
All right, I'll make a motion that we sign the letter drafted by council to, to reach out to the Atwood property owner. Is that what this is?
It's for, it has to do with right of first refusal. Either the letter will be drafted, depending upon the research that council does, it will either say the reasons why the clock has not started yet, or if for some reason in their research, they feel that the clock has started, that's why the importance of the timeframe.
Okay.
Then it would say that we want to keep our options open and potentially exercise our right of first refusal. So it'll say one of those two things. So I think what Mark and I were thinking, just because of the timeline and where it is time sensitive, if the board voted to endorse the letter as drafted by council with the caveat that if you want edits made, that they can be done through me to council rather than you needing to meet again to then sign. It's kind of so that we're not overcomplicating the process of sending the letter.
And the letter will be to the property owners?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll make the motion that we.
Draft the letter?
Provisionally.
Provisionally.
Accept or authorize?
Authorize, assuming there are no comments that we want to share back to the town council.
Okay, the letter from council on first refusal.
Right.
To the property owners, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you know, I think in considering this, I know we threw out a lot of stuff, maybe it just makes sense to open this to comments from the board of selectmen and comments from the audience before we vote on any other.
All right, I really like your sample land policy and process. I'd also like to see something like this for tax title land so that we're looking to see any land that comes on the books through tax title, that we look to see if it has conservation value, affordable housing value, open space recreation, whatever, before it goes to auction. So I think this is a really nice idea and possibly doing something with tax title land.
Soon as the dust settles.
Along the same.
I would love to do that. I think we end up a little too frequently just unclear on procedure and having it written down would be wonderful.
So this would just be a policy that is adopted by the board of selectmen for the town?
Yep.
Okay, okay. All right, was it Amy Cronin or Amy Dion?
Amy Cronin.
Amy Cronin, okay. All right, I think that is a, two fantastic ladies to look at that sand and gravel bylaw, creating it for us. It's awfully nice of them to offer to do that.
When they do that, will they look at the application itself then? Should I be giving them?
Sure.
Yeah, there were a couple of things to be added.
It's going to be the whole process to look at.
We recently turned that from a one-page, half-page document into a four-page document and already we've seen a couple of other things to add. Yeah, absolutely.
And it's great timing because we don't have any current gravel removal permit, so that's terrific. Regarding people going on the, on the land, I would just ask that it, it is private property and I know there is a tremendous interest in what the property looks like, but I think that we need to try to stay off its private property and we need to respect the landowners' rights and the easements and try to stay off the property. I do owe Becky Lipton a report on the last gravel permit for that property, so I'll take a look at that tonight, see if I find that in the records. I also had a question for Brian Wick. When was the last time that cranberries were harvested? Are they still feasible? I'd also like to see if council has any case law on, and I know there is because Howard brought it up and we were on the board together when we had the strawberry application, that, you know, means need to justify the ends, you know, so that you can't just haul out gravel for, to haul out gravel, that there has to be a legitimate reason with the cranberries and the state of the cranberries.
So you're talking under agricultural?
Yeah, under agricultural, yeah. That, that would be, I mean, there's got to be case law out there that it just has to be reasonable.
It can be done separately, but that would be a definition.
Right. And that's really all I had. I think your suggestions are great. I would absolutely support Linda and Amy getting started with that sand and gravel bylaw.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I would like the lawyer to be very clear about what the steps are so that, we have two issues going on. One is what can we do on, what can be done under agricultural? And then separately, if it doesn't qualify for agricultural, what are the steps then as far as sand and gravel? Because we haven't had really a process.
Yep.
Or a policy for them. We don't have any going on now.
No.
So we may have made sure that we're very clear so we don't end up in some sort of a suit down the road.
And that's, as I understand it, town council was more than glad to work on that as soon as we got the letter out. That'd be the next thing, I mean, I'd move forward with sand and gravel. I mean, we're really ending up with two things here. There's sort of the immediate stuff before us, the sand and gravel permit, the right of first refusal on this specific property. So those two, but in the long run, equally more important are proactively going forward, what's our policy going forward? So those are two tracks on each.
Mark, do you remember, or I don't know if you guys saw it, what was the purchase and sales price that they were negotiating?
The latest one was a million dollars.
Okay, and I think that's what came to us too. It was a million dollars.
Right.
So the price has not changed?
Not that, we haven't received anything different than that.
Okay, okay. All right, do you have any more questions?
No, I think, I think it's a good, you know.
So I'm going to go back down our action step list, but should we?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, anybody have questions? CJ, okay. All right, go ahead, Becky.
Okay, I've done some research, I've been doing research on this project for a long time. It was long before, obviously, of this because I'm interested in what happened there back in the 1600s. But you know, Jeanette Buscay does own land up there. Her father owned that bog prior and so I have two deeds, plant saved, and I have them and I would like to present them to you, but I thought it was giant pile of papers, that she, anybody that has land or has to get back to Ellis Island should be able to get back there. So it's a right of way for them and I don't want her to get in trouble or her son to get in trouble or Daryl to get in trouble because they live here, they have land. I researched her deed and she definitely has land there, so I just want to make that clear. I don't want to get myself in trouble going back there, trust me.
Great, perfect. CJ, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, so I'm CJ Quinelli on 4 Soul Street. And I guess I was a little bit on my heels at the last meeting. I'd really just heard about this project in very general terms shortly before the meeting. It was really only when I entered the meeting and looked at the map that was presented, that it dawned on me that just the sheer magnitude of what was being presented. The plan that was presented for review, the plan is probably a hundred acres in, in the plan and the way it was presented with, it's difficult, it's easy to lose your perspective when, when you're presenting something that zoomed out far enough that, you know, this little yellow sliver over here, I just want to expand my box just a little bit. It's a massive, massive piece of land. There's a huge ridge. It's just an enormous, an enormous undertaking that's being presented. I think it would be wise of the town to, if this were to be considered, to assess the true volume of what is there because if, I think the applicant had communicated something along the lines of 600,000 cubic meters. If in fact, the, the volume is something two or three times greater than that, that's going to obviously increase the duration by a multiple of years. It's just, it's a fundamental consideration that is just of critical importance to the whole thing. The proximity of this, they call it as, you know, gravel, you know, you sort of think of gravel like it's just a pile of sand. It's not. It's this pristine woodland that's adjacent to just gorgeous habitat. I'm really not historically in a position where I like to put myself out in a conspicuous spot like this, but I don't think people fully grasp the value of this thing and the topology and the way that the watershed is going to potentially impact everything downstream. It feeds right into the Winnetokset River. There's outflows that go out through the Soul Homestead. It's just this, this enormous thing and I don't think Plimpton itself as a town has the mechanism to even oversee something like this. So you approve a project like this and then now, how do you, how do you oversee this project? It's just, if you have a project of this magnitude, of this profitability, in which the, the operation is running at just such huge profits that you can afford any number of fines. And I think if you do some research into what this particular applicant has done in similar towns, where this is sort of like his, his end, you know, I'm just a simple guy that just wants to take over cranberry and just grow cranberries and by the time he gets started, it just expands into this, this huge operation that really has very little to do with cranberries. I don't want to make assumptions about the applicant's character or anything like that, but I just think it's disingenuous. If you understood the magnitude of the earth that he's proposing to remove, to present that in a manner that sort of says that this is about cranberries is just wildly disingenuous. It's insane. And it's just, I just, I would hope that there was a real due process here before anybody even like considered reviewing a permit. It's just the proximity to the wetlands, that the applicant had made some mention of potentially having like alternate ways out if this, if this access was in conflict here with, with other landowners. It's all wetlands. There's, there's no way out. He would have to be granted permission to do wetlands crossings in, I see maybe two ways that he could be thinking, both of which are just preposterous. The whole thing is just, just like, you know, as I've come to understand in the last week what he's proposing, it has me extremely unsettled. I know that there's people on Prospect Street that are residents. To be clear, my property doesn't directly abut the Atwood property. It's buffered by, there's another parcel of undeveloped land, but it very much feels like my backyard and, but it's not right up in my living space. The people on Prospect Street however, would be severely impacted by this. So you're talking about a hundred laden gravel trucks a day coming through that community, that portion of the community. Like I said, that calculation is of critical importance because 100 trucks a day, say 20 yards of gravel per truck, you're talking about a half a million trucks just to ship the gravel, I mean, a half a million yards, that's a year of five days a week, 52 weeks a year. If that calculation is off, you're adding multiple years beyond that. It's just a really fundamental, of critical importance to understand what this guy's really proposing and to present this as agriculture is preposterous. And I, like, I work in construction, so, and I fully respect people's aspiration to make a living, but this is just absolutely outrageous and this is not about agriculture. It's just not.
All right. I'm sorry, I can't remember your name from last week. Thank you.
First of all, at the last meeting, the man that was here, that owns Laker, he actually didn't use the word harvest cranberries. I heard him say restore bogs and I think semantics are really important here because I think it better describes what his intentions are. And having a bog in such close proximity to this material is really kind of fortunate for him because he can do it under the guise of agriculture. So this is sort of kind of a clever operation on his, well, you know, it is, it's very smart, but unfortunately, the environmental effects, it doesn't matter what, you know, how he chooses to operate this because my brother-in-law, who I've mentioned before, has his masters in geology, he's been a geologist for 30-plus years, he knows this area very well, writes that because woodlands and uplands bordering the wetstone wells buffer or protect the quality of the streams and the wetlands, anybody who's downstream of this and people in the immediate area, their wells will be impacted. Water quality will be impacted. We already pay pretty high real estate taxes in this town and I have no problem with that, but I have a huge problem with high real estate taxes and I turn on my tap and poison comes out. So, and this isn't something that will happen immediately. It would be a gradual, kind of insidious thing, which is even scarier because we won't know when that's going to occur.
That whole area anyway, those Plimpton residents. Warren, I like to say it's a horseshoe, okay? And you guys know the Carver, let's picture the horseshoe in the, so we have Carver when McDonald's is, you know it's Carver, they're getting Middleborough water. That whole street that goes up that, Quinn Street, they're getting Middleborough water from that Ravenbrook landfill that we're looking at. So that's a super fun site. Now you come around and you come down Prospect Road, Middleborough dump has polluted the residents' waters down there, so they're having to pay Middleborough. So you have Carver paying Middleborough and you have Plimpton paying Middleborough. And we're, in the middle is a wasteland of dump from gravel removal, okay? It's habitat loss, it's a dump site in there. So when is that pollution going to start creeping in? You know, we've already had a history of failure with this stuff and so I'm just concerned about my well, her well, everyone's well.
And this is what the uplands buffer and the upland, as I understand it, is what he describes as what he would be taking the gravel from. So once that's gone, it's kind of like, imagine something kind of being the filtration system for our water. That big upland is our built-in filtration for the water. Once that's gone, we're screwed.
And all those plants, that whole. And all those plants, that whole reservoir, which used to be a fresh meadow, is surrounded by cleft rhodopolea. It's huge habitat for bees, pollinators, insects, you know, and it sucks up pollution. All those plants around that reservoir suck in up pollution. We need that gravel there. It's protecting us.
All right, does anybody else want to...
I'm Mrs. Atwood, and I'm really listening very carefully to all your concerns. And I'm saying to myself, when there was a couple of boys when we were walking down, I mean, I'm interested in the fact that you're so concerned about my land, but when your children were throwing rocks into our canals, that didn't bother you. And I think the person was here whose sons were doing that. When somebody else's son burned down our bog shack, that didn't bother you. When some other people put up signs for their horse trails, that didn't bother you. That's our property. Nobody ever has come to me and asked permission for a trail ride, for a plain horse ride, for three, whatever those all-terrain vehicle trail rides through, through motorcycle people, through people on other little bikes, for hunters who leave dead carcasses on our cranberry bogs, for other tents that are left in the woods, for duck blinds. And we have never been confrontational about any of it. And now all of you are here, all of a sudden, something's going to happen to your property, which you never gave a damn when we were putting in all kinds of fertilizer and everything that went into the water, which maybe could have affected your wells, but all of a sudden, a sand pit, not a mountain. We're not talking about a mountain that they're going to take...
All right, one at a time, please. Let Mrs. Atwood speak.
It's a sand pit. It's a pimple compared to a mountain. And you people all now are nature lovers. You didn't give a damn about my bog when you trail rode through. I can't walk down there with my head up, because I have to walk, walk carefully, watching my feet, so that I don't step in your dogs' dew, or your horse's manure. Geese, I give them a free ride. They belong there. But the rest of you don't, and you've never asked my permission. Two people have asked my permission in the years that we've owned the bog. The guy who trapped a muskrat, twice his height. He's the first and only trapper who asked our permission. Betty Anderson, the ornithologist, asked our permission. Now the rest of you beautiful land people who love the land but have no respect for mine, until I want to sell it, because my husband's sick, he's in no field house, and I have to get this property sold. And I haven't got somebody to run it now. And you're putting delays on it. And I can't, and now what do I do? I've got to spend more money hiring somebody to run it again, when I thought this would all be over. Where were you last year, asking me to buy it? Where was anybody three years ago? Nobody! But all of a sudden, your playground's going. The place where you go and don't ask permission. And now, it's a nature preserve. And as for you all up here, I couldn't hear a word, because I don't think your microphones are on.
Sorry.
But I hope you all heard my words.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Atwood. All right, Gail?
I'm Gail Knight, 45, Winnatacet Road. Respectfully, and I mean that, I haven't been on your property. My children haven't been on your property, my dogs haven't been on your property, I don't have enforcers. I live around the corner on Winnatacet Road. I have collectively about 10 acres. My mom lives there, me and my kids. I appreciate everything you say, and it sounds like you're right about an awful lot. I didn't know you were trying to sell your property. It was news to me. All of this is news to me. Had I honestly known, I would have tried, had I had an inkling of what was going on. You do have rights. It is your land, and it should be protected. That's all I have to say. And I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that people have abused it over the years, but it's not all of us. I can understand why it might feel that way, but it's not all of us.
Well, the thing that bothers me is that Booth and I have never been confrontational.
No.
And when the bog shack...
Excuse me, Mrs. Atwood, Mrs. Atwood. I moved to town 17 years ago. My property is right side of your property. I was working at the end of my driveway, only being new in town for about six weeks, and you and your son stopped. And I thought, oh, isn't this nice, to introduce yourself to the new neighbors? Within two seconds, you told me not to step foot, not to interfere with your property. Six weeks in the neighborhood, and I looked at you and I said, "I have 10 acres of my own land, I have no need for your property." A few years ago, all of a sudden, Atwood, without a letter to me, because supposedly you didn't know people that brought the property, this was about six years ago, Newcombe Tree Service was hired to go down my right-of-way and widen the road, so the trucks could come out from the bogs with the cranberries. I did not get a letter from a butler. Fortunately, one of my neighbors got me in time to go down there and stop the process from cutting trees off of my property.
All right, let's, everyone focus on, I know there's some, you know, hard feelings here, but let's, Jen, go ahead.
I'm 44, the one getting into the house out front, my right-of-way is, and actually the right-of-way is drifting. I've done some new research with my attorney. Unfortunately, it's drifting into our property, it's actually not on the free property.
It's happening.
Yeah, so, just the logistics of using that right-of-way for 100 trucks a day, it's only six feet wide. I am legally able to walk on it because it's my property, so I went out there and measured it, took lots of pictures of it. There's just no way you could possibly bring 100 trucks down there five, six days a week for three years without doing something more to widen it more. You cannot widen that property, that right-of-way, or do any modifications to it, without asking all of the butlers to James Point. That is, not overburden it at all. It was just originally for timber use and nothing else. So for it to change the use to something else for gravel removal, I mean, cranberry truck once in a while is fine, but anything more than that doesn't make sense. Besides the fact that the trucks could never make the turn, they would have to go down the neighborhood road there and turn around in there, that would burden all of those areas as well. I totally understand where you're coming from. I own property in town, I don't like anyone walking on my property either. I don't like anyone hunting on my property. I completely understand that, but you can also understand our point of view here is, you know, it's impacting not only just one or two houses, but we're talking about 100 trucks coming up and down the neighborhood five, six times a day, I mean, 100 times a day, five, six times a week, with children, we're talking about water supply, valuable homes, there are, there's so many things there that were with this impact. And it's not just about, you know, cranberries, it's more than that. So, you know, I think if I had known it was for sale myself, I would have bought it. So I'm a buyer, and you didn't want to sell it to me.
The side of that driveway is literally five feet from Derek Harfender's garage. Literally, he has a strip of land, and you can imagine the size of these gravel trucks. Especially speaking, I've been an environmentalist, not just since recently, my entire life, okay? I have a certified organic farm that's been, that I've been farming there for 28 years almost. So, I mean, this is my lifestyle. This is not just something, you know, I've worked with Christine and Selectmen on other projects in this town, and, or in another town, and, you know, this is...
And you wouldn't have liked it when somebody walked out with a white lady slipper.
Listen, I would have hated that. You can bet your bottom dollar I would have hated that.
And I said, "You aren't taking that."
I don't have guns.
And the person just walked out with it.
My children would not destroy your property. I can assure you of that, okay? You know what? And I do have permission on Booth's property, by the way.
Okay.
With Bob, who's gave me permission.
Gail, did you want to say something else?
Bob, who's gay, not your property.
So it seems like I kind of shut you down.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted, the point was, in all honesty, a lot of us don't know each other. We're getting to know each other a little bit because of this, but I feel the same way that Jennifer does, that I don't want anyone on my land either. I don't want anyone hunting my land, and post my land, I don't want anyone. I can completely relate to what you're saying, and I would also be very upset. But it's not, it's not everyone. Someone walking off your property with a lady slipper, that's unconscionable, burning down your shed.
It's a pattern that really fooled me.
Had I known, I would have stuck up for you.
Right.
Had I known. I didn't know. I didn't know. Unfortunately, I think you're clear.
All right, let's take a couple more questions.
Maybe I want to make a comment.
Things like that happening, and by the time you find out, you know, your shed is burned down, or somebody's taken something out of it that they shouldn't, and that's unfortunate. And I wouldn't want anybody in life walking either.
And somebody stole cranberries, boxes of cranberries, and somebody opened the dike and let the cranberries go down to the river. I mean, and if I seem shocked to you, I'm sorry. It's because we've had just an avalanche of things happen, and...
And look, you're...
You know, you're just trying, and now I've just got to sell it.
Right, and that's the other thing, your husband's been sick. I'm a nurse, but nobody knew it was... Your husband's sick, right? You've got a lot on your plate. I get, I get, but I, my daughter doesn't go out there with her horse, my daughter doesn't own your property, I don't ride my horse out there, I don't do any of that stuff.
Thank you.
What paper?
Reference Sweets' right-of-way. Okay. These are just some of the things there. But the two top top reference of right-of-way. Okay, all right, thank you. Should I have? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Atwood. All right, I know Mark wanted to say something real quick.
I didn't hear you.
Don't...
We're going to come back to you. Hold on just a second.
Don't leave, yeah, I am sorry, I'm really sorry you didn't hear us. There will be a recording, I'd very much like you to hear our comments. One of the things that I said is the Selectmen fully understand that we have to protect the rights of all citizens. We know there are a lot of citizens in here.
And all those people moved there, knowing there was a cranberry bog there.
Okay, but listen...
Here's another point, I mean, that bog was there before they moved there.
A couple of other things that I said is that I wanted to ask permission of the Selectmen to contact you guys, so that the Selectmen are talking directly to you as well. There's probably going to be a letter later this week from...
Is next week a meeting?
No.
No.
But, but, listen, but you're going to get a letter from the attorney that probably says the right of first refusal can't be started yet, but I want to start a conversation between the Board of Selectmen and you.
I wish you could cover it up, so I don't have to hire somebody.
You're going to end up, you're going to end up with this land sold, whether it's protected or sold to a developer, but what you have to understand right now, it's going to take time. It's not together yet.
Am I going to have to hire somebody to start running it again in the spring?
To run the cranberry farm?
Well, yeah, they got to, you know, start sprinkling and all the rest of the stuff frosted.
That's, that's actually something we probably can't give advice on. I want to speak to you later this week. I mainly, I think for everyone, we want to be careful here and separate out the owner's right to their land being used the way they want, and I think it's very clear that's come out of this, is anyone that's using that land needs to ask permission first. That's a really important issue, and obviously something you care about deeply. I don't want all that to get confused with how we're going to end up having this land sold and you getting what you need from it. What I certainly know in dealing with other land deals, it's going to take a while. I mean, I don't think this is going to happen right away. We can't even come close to it starting until certain things happen with understanding how many acres it is and what the land is. It has nothing to do with any of our judgments, it just has to do with the process.
But we've done through, we've gone through many hoops.
I know, you've got more to...
We've gone through all seven, everything.
And I think you have, I think you have more to go through, which isn't our doing, it's the nature of the process.
But it started at last spring, you know? And I thought we'd be done in the fall, and then we thought, well, maybe we better wait till the crop is picked, so there's no confusion on who owns the crop.
Okay.
So we waited until that, and then all of a sudden, there were hoops put in front of us. And so it delayed, 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 which, you know, now I'm up against whether I've got to hire a group to start running the bog again. I mean, I can let it in the winter, but I can't. Pretty soon, I've got to have another group. That's more money for me.
Right.
And my object of selling the bog is to get a little money. I'm paying $3.80 a day for my husband out of pocket.
I think we all understand that, and I think no one wants to put up any more hoops that are necessary, but it is the nature of this process to take a while.
But we're going to try to do as quickly as we can.
I mean, one of, one of the consequences of putting land into chapter is just this. You save on taxes and you complicate a sale at the end.
Well, I was a very young girl when we started this, and let me tell you, I didn't know any of that. And I wasn't privy to it.
I know.
I mean, I was told, "Sign here," and I did, I obeyed, and now I'm trying to figure it all out.
And it will get figured out, and I think we're all on your side.
And I appreciate all your kindness, and I, please, I want you to know, I appreciate your kindness, and just listening to me.
I'm going to try to get a phone number. Vertical, vertical.
An old lady with white hair, who got the white hair from so many issues.
Mrs. Atwood, would you, don't say it out loud, but if you'll write down your phone number so we can continue the conversation.
And I only got one phone number I've memorized. The other one, I barely use it.
Perfect, this is perfect. Now, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
Oh, that's all right.
No, did you want to talk?
I just wanted to talk to Mrs. Atwood, now I feel really bad.
Okay.
This is, I'm hitting a ridge, so this is supposed to be a 24274.
Okay.
La 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 la. I just want to talk to you, so you, I can hear you just real quick. I live at 62 Prospect, so your land is right next to my land. I understand when you say you don't want anyone on your property. When I opened my eyes and saw a backhoe right next to my house with no warning, it broke my heart. I don't know what's going on. Nobody knew that this land was for sale. I didn't know next to me could possibly be a road with 18 miles running right next to my house. My kid is, and my dog, and we have never been on...
Did you buy your house or build your house?
I built my house.
You didn't buy or build it on our property, and that is the reason why we never sold property...
For me?
To anybody to build a house on. So they wouldn't have a nervous breakdown over the equipment that might come down there. So I didn't say that part.
No, 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 no.
So I can't help you with all the equipment that's there, because that's what happens on a cranberry bog.
Do you guys want to take this offline?
You know what? I want to go home. I'm really tired.
I was sorry, I've been meaning to say we don't want to talk to you.
All right, all right.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
You too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, Rick?
Real quick, I believe there's going to be a motion made tomorrow night at the CPC meeting to exercise the... motion made tomorrow night at the CPC meeting to exercise the money that was voted to do an appraisal on that property to start the process.
Okay.
So, okay.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Good. So will you let us know?
Well, ultimately, ultimately, it'll be, um, that money has already been approved. It'll be an open space committee thing, and I really just wanted the Selectmen to know that I think that makes a lot of sense. It's an open space decision, but, um, um, I think that's money well spent of just understanding what we're talking about here.
Sounds like a good idea to me, too.
Situation, I think to move things along forward.
Okay. Did anybody else, Becky, before you, does anybody else have anything to say that hasn't spoken? Go right ahead.
62 Prospect, right next door. They're gonna build in the four or five houses, if that's what my, or was actually going to do. You'll know it's all reference. Standing on my well, I'm sorry, this is difficult. Standing on my well, I look over, I'm not on her property, and I see where perk tests are being done. Plimpton law is it has to be 200 feet from my well. It's 115 feet. So they were that close to my well. You can't do a perk test that close to my well. And they get, that's a major concern, even now, major concerns down the road. Environmental, and animals, and that's absolutely, but I'm done with right now. My well contaminated now because they dug right in there? I don't know. So what are you concerned about my well right now? All this other stuff is gonna be-
Would that be Board of Health?
Oh, I'm going to Board of Health.
Concomitant.
For the perk test? I think that's the Board of Health.
Yeah, Board of Health, right, yes.
Yeah, I would, I think they might be here tonight. Are they here tonight?
They just left.
Oh, did they? Okay.
We'll bring it up with them as part of the-
I'll be in tomorrow, too.
Okay, perfect.
What is your address again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
What is your address again?
62 Prospect.
And your, um, last name?
Brown.
Okay, anybody else that hasn't spoken?
So there's only 115 feet from my well, because that's our property. It's probably just about 200 feet from my well.
Okay. All right, well, we'll talk about this with, um, Board of Health. Have them look into it. All right, anybody else that hasn't had a, answered a question or comments? All right, Becky, you had something you wanted to say?
You know, just offered you some suggestions about the NRCS. They may be hel- helpful to you in trying to find out what to do with chapter lands, um, and, and any land coming out of chapter land. Give you some suggestions maybe. So they're a branch of the USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Service. And they may help you some way to figure out some kind of, you know, who knows? Maybe they have some grant money.
Maybe.
You know? And that would be great, especially, you know, a town approaching them. So I just wanted to, and they have an office right down here where hand, rubber lines.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Quick question. Um, on the appraisal, which we'd like to do right away, there's a question as to whether some of that land is owned by the Billings. Um, wouldn't we need to resolve that before having it appraised?
Um, and that's-
That would affect the appraisal value.
We have to sort that out, and, and it may be that we won't do the appraisal until the boundaries get sorted out. And that's where it gets to be complicated, because that may take a while.
Yeah, 'cause if that's right in the middle of it, that would certainly reduce the value.
Absolutely.
The great deal.
Um, and I, yeah, it, it's not, none of it's gonna happen right away.
No, and it's not e- an easy process, and it is gonna be time consuming. But we're definitely, you know, working on it.
Oh, yeah.
We're working on it.
Nick and I have talked about having, because they were more expensive water tests done. Um, we do this, and we're gonna do this pretty soon. What happens if our wells are contaminated?
That's gonna be a private matter.
We, we get water. How, what do we do?
That's a question for the Board of Health. I can't answer that for you. I don't know.
And who's responsible? And if it turns out that those perk tests is what contaminated your well, if it, if it is contaminated, who's responsible for that?
You know, I don't know enough about a perk test to answer that question, whether or not, if it's, I think it's just a hole dug in the ground, isn't it? Yeah, it shouldn't do anything to contaminate your well, but-
Well, it's, it's not, it's not-
It's moving earth underground wells. And it is well over there.
It's all, a perk shouldn't contaminate the well, because it's just measuring how fast the water, right, percolates, percolates through the, the sand. It's not a septic system. Women's septic system, women, men, that can contain a very raw-
Absolutely.
And measure the per-
All right, thank you. I didn't think so either.
Well, you can't dash in it, but it's possible, doesn't exist.
Well, it's just a hole.
Yeah, yeah, that's not just a hole. I mean, they are in the dirt, and they're going down hard.
You're mine well illegally.
I would talk to the Board of Health. I would absolutely talk to the Board of Health.
Um, do they need to get a permit from you guys for the perk test?
No.
Or is it where?
Board of Health. Okay, any other questions? If not, we're gonna move on to our next topic. Well, thank you all for coming. Once again, it's great to have your participation. You have a lot of great insight, and, um, there is, um, a long way to go, unfortunately, with this process. But, um, we'll, uh, as we get updates, we'll put it on the agenda and have it on, um, updates on our Facebook page, so that you can kind of keep in, in touch with what's going on so that, um, everybody's kept in the loop.
And just, again, to, can't emphasize enough, there will be an official public hearing before any action takes place. I, we welcome you anytime. We're glad to hear you. You don't necessarily have to scoot in every week. You know, it's an open meeting. Come if you want.
Hey, you're accepting all of the people showing up.
I know. I love having people here. This never happens.
I just want to suggest to you, you can sign up on the town website for postings of agenda meetings, and if you just click over to Board of Selectmen, it will give you the option that when a meeting gets posted, it will alert to your email, and you'll be able to see it.
What's on the agenda?
You don't want us to call you, but you're welcome.
She does. She loves it. She loves it.
I love talking to all of you.
All right, thank you all for coming.
That is a way to look, in case it's on the weekend or something, and you're waiting for-
All right. John's gonna grab some water.
Wow.
And then you get to visit our website.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They're not interested in the rest of the agenda.
I don't know, they might be. All right.
Just, I'm, this is a recording, so be careful. You noticed.
Well, no, I, I, I like the way things are going.
Thank you, that's nice of you to say that.
Took a lot of years to kind of get that ball rolling.
Yes, it did.
I'm, I'm happy to see you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Shall, shall I ask them to go outside?
Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Okay.
Folks, if you want to take your discussions, um, outside.
Okay. All right, so next item on the agenda is fire and EMS consultant MRI draft review. Okay.
That's selfish.
It's all right.
We're gonna have to ask you to go outside, please, so we can continue our discussion.
All right, so fire and EMS consultant MRI draft review. Uh, we are still waiting for the review.
Supposedly Thursday.
Okay, so we're gonna be seeing that very soon. Okay, monitoring rocky harvest to ensure compliance with settlement agreement. Um, we touched on this last week. Um, we did get more complaints from, uh, the Devlin's that, um, they had pumped, ah, my note. They had been, um, there early on 125 and 126, which we wrote, um, a letter to, um, Mr. Rose last week. We signed that. Then, um, Mrs. Devlin informed me today, they were there early on the 6th, the 7th, and today, this morning. So I, I called Ed Rose and informed him of these violations of the settlement agreement. He said that he would be calling the, um, M&amp;M Trucking Dispatch, and that he would put an end to it. So, um, hopefully, he is able to do that. But, um, in the meantime, I think that we need to look at a, um, means for us to monitor the terms of our settlement agreement. Be, uh, like, a game camera or something up there that can take images to record the date and time, and a license plate, so that we're able to monitor how many vehicles are going in there on a daily basis, and what times the vehicles are there.
Now, do we know who owns the land directly across the street from the entrance?
Uh, is it Norrie?
I don't know.
I think it might be John Norrie.
I don't know.
So I'm gonna ask him if it is John Norrie, if he would object to us putting a camera up there. In fact, we have a action item to go meet with him, so we can talk to him then.
Um, I, I, I mean, I'm, all that's fine. I, I do, you know, it's not such a big deal for, um, the Devlin's to email us when they notice.
But they don't want to do that anymore.
I understand, but, um, well, I understand. And I, so the camera idea is great. Um, I mean, if the Devlin's just wanted to keep letting us know, it, in a lot of ways, it's the easiest, and they're there.
And the cheapest way to do it, but they-
But the camera would be, you know, all we have is the Devlin's word, and we go to arbitration, and then-
Well, and, and, you know, as far as legal evidence, it's fine. You know, what it brings up is someone having to, uh, you know, probably keep an, check that film every week or every month.
Right, but it's worth looking into, and at least it might be too expensive anyways. We don't know.
I mean, I agree it's worth looking into. I, I, I wonder if one more conversation with the Devlin's, and I'd even be willing to do it if you want. Um, requesting that, maybe they simply let us know.
I don't think that does it for us, though, Mark. You know?
Okay.
I mean, I'm not opposed to you having a conversation, but I still don't think it really buttresses our, our position that in fact they're outside the terms of the agreement.
Okay. No, I, I mean, as far as legal evidence, obviously, we would need it, and the camera's the way to do it.
Yeah, and I don't even know if it needs to be solar. I'd originally suggested solar, but these now have like 12 batteries, and what will happen is we just won't get pictures anymore, and then we'll know we need to change the batteries, so-
Yeah, we just put it on the agenda every three months to go up and change the batteries.
Go change the batteries. So, um, these aren't super expensive.
I think Liz had looked into it.
I had looked into them. It, it ranges from a few hundred dollars to some systems I saw were up to 2,000. But the 2,000 dollar ones have like night vision, um, and it's a higher, um, higher definition so that you'd actually be able to, say, make out a license plate number. Um, and then a lot of them are rated based on like how many pictures per second it can capture, so that you could see a truck, you know, progress into the site or out of the site. Um, where it was unclear was, as far as getting the information back, and what sort of, if any, infrastructure do you need in place to connect to? Um, like, whether we were looking at a battery operated or something that had some sort of a power source. Um, and that was, seemed to be where the costs really varied. Um, I did put one feeler out to, um, the person who does all of our IT stuff, not because he would have expertise in that, but more so I was wondering if he knew anyone in the industry that could say, "Oh, well, I've done it for this community or that." Um, he did not, so I have, um, a meeting coming up at the end of this week with the South Shore Managers. So I was planning to ask the question there and just say, "Has anyone ever had a piece of, you know, town-owned property, or whatever the case may be, that you wanted to install a surveillance system? Can you point me in the right direction of a vendor or somebody that we could-"
Yeah, we ought to have somebody.
"- pursue it and see, see what we need?" Um, 'cause it looked like so many different options, and I don't know. You wouldn't want to invest a lot of money into a system, and then-
Right.
-we get it out there, and it's like, well, okay, this isn't what we need, or this isn't going to-
No, and we shouldn't, we don't want to pay for monitoring, where-
Right.
-some of them offered, you know, you can do 15 pictures a month, and like, well, that doesn't do us any good. We're gonna have, you know, 15 pictures at least a day.
Right, and I know that there are services like that now, that you can just get like a notification, but like you said, it's limited, so, um, I, I plan to send out, I'll probably send an email first, and then when I meet with them on Thursday, I'll follow up and just see if anybody-
Okay.
I mean, there has to be another community that has a surveillance system on there.
Well, I, yeah, I'm sure that they would.
On some town-owned property, and just be able to kind of say, "Oh, well, this is what you would want."
Right, 'cause it doesn't need to be elaborate.
It doesn't need to be elaborate, and I think, like Mark was saying, we don't want it to be the type of thing that you could miss it if you're not, or that you have to rewind through-
No, right.
-a bunch of footage. You want it to be motion activated, but you also need it to be high-tech enough that it's not sending you an alert if a, you know, if a deer goes by or something like that.
Right.
Um, 'cause a lot of the game cameras, they're geared towards something of that size and larger will trigger.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe we'd see the bobcat.
Yeah.
Maybe, and fisher cats, all sorts of good stuff. All right, so, um, I'll let her know that we're, um, still talking about it. We're not sure what, um, route we're gonna take, and that if she could continue to let us know in the meantime, we'd appreciate it while we're, um, trying to work this out.
Good, that's good.
All right, perfect. Okay. All right, um, Old Town House lease update.
Okay, so we have a signed lease agreement now between USM and the Historical Society.
Yay.
So I'm gonna have Bree, if you would send copies to everybody, um, so the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, and Jessica Kins- In fact, did you go to the board now that they have, each one, which is Jessica Kinsman, Kathy Kerstet, Jen McDonald, and Lillian Kruger? And I can get you emails, um, for any that you don't have. Kruger is K-R-U-G-E-R.
Who would just be, did they always have a board?
The board went into abeyance, and people got off, and there was only Jessica that, uh, we've been dealing with over the last year, and now, uh, at the last meeting at the Murdock House, the board was nominated, and they've since met.
Great news.
So we have upset something that the Board of Selectmen does?
No, Board of Selectmen, this is a separate, it's like the guide and clubs.
Okay.
Thank you.
We also have a, we'll, we'll send this around, too. This is just a letter that says, "An agreement between Deb Anderson from the Plimpton Halifax Express and Jessica Kinsman from the Historical Society, saying that, uh, the Halifax-Plimpton Express can publish the tales of Old Plimpton, that it can be terminated by either party, just by written notice, and that when they publish it, they have to acknowledge that this is courtesy of the Plimpton Historical Society." Uh, Jessica and I met with Steve Sorrow out there, walked through the building. So he's going to start his cleaning. He understands that he's got four hours, max. Um, and, well, he's gonna do it at his schedule. He doesn't want people there, obviously.
Right.
And he's, it's not gonna be a set day and time. He'll just go in and on a weekend or a Thursday night or whatever.
Perfect.
He's also gonna, you know, the lease agreement says there has to be a sign out front, and the sign got whacked, and it's been out of commission for a while. Steve's gonna fix it, and, uh, in the spring, once the ground's thawed, we'll put that back in.
Very nice.
And I think that's about it.
Okay. All right, we already did the Atwood property update. Liz, do you have anything?
Um, yes, a few things. I met with Linda Letty today, and they're in the process of trying to get the updates to the open space plan finalized and in good standing with the state. Um, they need a few things to happen before that can take place, and they need it quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so one of the challenges that they're facing is, um, the Recreation Commission, um, from what I understand, is a little bit, um, out of service, could potentially use a refresher. Um, they did reach out to who they believe to be the current chair, um, but they haven't heard back from him yet. And as part of the plan, um, there are some instances where the state likes to see that you either have an active recreation commission, or if you don't, it's not a problem, but they typically ask the Board of Selectmen, um, to take a vote that just, it essentially assures the state that in the event that something came up and the Rec Commission was unable to act, that the Board of Selectmen is willing to step in on their behalf and make certain decisions if it had to be done. Um, so she came to me today, um, so I know it's sort of short notice. I don't know if you need to mull it over or not, but if not, she was hoping that you could take, um, just sort of an informal vote of acknowledgement that in the event it was necessary, you would be willing to- vote of acknowledgement that in the event it was necessary, you would be willing to, you know, step in for the Rec Commission if needed, if something last minute came up and a decision had to be made on something and they were unable to convene a meeting.
Who's the current chair?
The last one was, um, Mr. Karparis, I think, and I don't know who...
Yeah, no, there's somebody new.
That's not the name that she said to me. I can't recall what she said, but that doesn't ring a bell.
I, I think, I'm, I'm glad to support that suggestion that the Board of Selectmen, uh, step in, in those situations. I wonder if it can wait two weeks so we can put it on the agenda.
Do you wanna wait? Is it more comfortable?
Do you have time?
We have time. It's not, um, I mean, it's not like the stuff needs to be done immediately, but she also can't wait, you know, two months or she doesn't wanna, they don't wanna be in a situation where they're sort of stonewalled and unable to move forward.
I, I think, I just, that gives us a little time. I think we're all gonna be in favor of that and I expect that it'll be fine. Maybe it gives us a little time to research a little where we're at with the Rec Commission and if there are people out there that are interested, Recreation, um, Commission has been kind of inactive and, uh, it would really be nice to rejuvenate that.
Absolutely. They did some really good things. They have a, um, a budget line and, um, I think they may even have, um, some type of revolving account because they put the yellow on top of the fencing out there. They did the, the batting cage. They, they were for a while quite active and they really did some nice things with their money. So, it definitely, if you've got, um, kids that are in, uh, the sports programs or if you have time and'd like to be involved, we could absolutely use some volunteers to get, um, active with Recreation again.
I'll get you the names...
Okay.
...of who's on that currently.
Okay.
I know two.
Okay.
And I, I should emphasize, um, she was very complimentary towards the Recreation Commission and some of the efforts that they've completed in the past. This was more just a quick-hit kind of item, you know, in the event that they are unable to convene a meeting.
Sure.
But she was very complimentary...
Absolutely.
...towards them and their, and their efforts.
Great.
So, you want that on the next...
Please, if we could put that on the agenda. And if we could get the names of the people who are, you currently have serving...
I can give you the wording for the agenda.
Do you want it as your update?
No, we, I think we should put it as an actual topic.
Mm-hmm. Because we can reach out to the members and...
Do you want it on the next?
Then the next point that she brought up, um, all, also relating to the Open Space Plan, um, and you may wanna put this off until the 26th. It might make sense to do it at the same time. We need to formally designate, um, a new ADA Coordinator. Um, it was kind of unclear in the past and...
American with Disabilities?
Yes, you need a coordinator. Um, it's not a heavy lift, but there are, are from time to time, um, different trainings and everything. Um, in most communities, I find that either defaults to, um, a town or city council, but we're not in that position because we have KP, um, on more of a consulting-type basis. We don't have in-house council. Or a lot of times, the Public Works Director takes on that position, or in our case, the Highway Superintendent, just since they're dealing with so many, um, facilities and kind of the maintenance and everything, um, it's sort of a, a catch-all. It's one of those positions that could relate to numerous, um, numerous different departments. Obviously, you know, it might have some relevance with the Council on Aging, for instance. Or even in some places, um, the town or city clerk kind of steps in in certain instances, um, because I think certain meeting postings, if somebody calls and says that they request special accommodations or something like that, um, then sometimes the town or city clerk gets involved to make sure that they can, you know, adequately access the meeting or have whatever resources available. But I guess the ADA piece is now, this year, with trying to update the plan, it's getting to be a big kind of undertaking for the volunteers on the Open Space Board.
Absolutely.
So, I had wondered if it would make sense to, maybe in the interim, I, I thought maybe I could talk with Jim Mulcahy and just see if he was okay with that. And then maybe going forward in that new job description for the Highway Superintendent, maybe we just wanna insert a little line that that's in there. You don't need any specific expertise to do it, but you do need to be aware of, of what's being requested and, and items like that.
Makes sense.
I thought Bob Carling used to be our ADA Coordinator.
Maybe, I don't know.
Is that the, um, building commissioner?
I didn't even know we had one. It's not listed on the, uh...
No, that was years ago.
It's a good idea to be somewhat public about it, just so that nobody can, you know, have an issue if maybe they wanted to attend a meeting and they had questions about the accessibility of the building.
Can we put that on the agenda as well?
I think we should. I think that that kind of ties in, um, with the other vote.
Okay, and you'll touch base with Jim to see if he's interested?
I'll touch base with Jim and I'll also connect with Tara, just in case if Bob was doing it, like, we're not looking to...
Well, you can connect with Bob too.
Right, that's what I mean. And just, I don't wanna ruffle any feathers. If somebody was doing it, it's not that they weren't doing what they were supposed to, it's just that we weren't aware of it.
Right, exactly.
Also, related to the Open Space Plan, um, they let me know that they are having Town Council review, um, a certain portion of their Concom Wetlands Bylaw and that they're likely going to have a warrant article and they have the money in their budget to pay for the services. So, um, they didn't feel like it was necessary to go through the process of requesting...
Okay.
...from the Selectmen. Um, they have an attorney that they work with from there and they've already spoken to her and they said it'll take an hour or two of her time and they're prepared to pay for that, um, out of their budget. They have funds put aside, so, um, so there was that. Um, we present our budgets to FinCom on February 26th. So, as was suggested, I can connect with Nate and find out which room we're meeting in if they wanna come here.
Okay.
Um, but that's at 6:00 PM, so I don't know if we wanna meet with them and then have our meeting after or try to do something joint. I'm not sure logistically.
Is that when we're having executive sessions we talked about?
I thought it was.
Yeah, it is. And we were backing those up, 5:30 and 6:00.
What if we move Jim to the first meeting in March, one week later, and we try to do the other one that we referred to it?
Does it have to be 6:00? Can they move it to 7:00?
I can talk to Nate too, because they're doing the school budget that night. I can see if they can move us.
They could take them first, yeah.
Yeah.
We may have to coordinate with Town Council as well as what time, if, and, if and what time he could come.
Or if they're unable to move us for whatever reason because of the school schedule, we could always do them in a separate room and I could go there and then just come back.
Okay.
Uh, but we're gonna want you at that executive session, for sure.
Right.
And we're planning on that at, what, 5:30 or 6:00?
Well, we, we had, we had Jim at 5:30, which we'll move, but the other one's gonna take more than a half hour.
That's for sure.
Sure is. Well, if we started at 5:30 on the 26th, we might be done by 6:30.
Maybe we can make it an hour. At worst, FinCom could probably flip their appointments.
Why don't you check with FinCom, see if they can move...
I'll check with Nate and...
Yeah, they can move us.
See.
Can you do an executive session at 5:00?
5:30.
No, 5:30 is really the earliest I can get here.
Okay, so we can all...
We got two weeks.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I met with Chief Dillon and some folks from Open Cape regarding, um, potentially pursuing a fiber connection for internet, so we're still looking at some of the costs and benefits associated with that. But Open Cape, their infrastructure is actually, it goes right by, um, on 58, so, and it's a lot more reliable, um, studies have found, so...
It goes down 58?
It does, in both directions.
Really?
Isn't that interesting?
I was never aware of that either.
What do you have down at 58?
Isn't that very interesting?
I, well, it's just towns, people have always wanted an option.
I don't know if it's for residential.
Oh, okay.
Um, they have a, an emphasis on, number one, public safety. They get reduced rates and then followed by municipal clients, um, who get the normal rate. So, I think the hope would be if, if we did want to pursue it and we felt like it was a better option than what we currently have, is to see if we could get the public safety rate, because currently, we're all in one building. And then obviously, when they split off, maybe we could just simply retain the public safety rate. But there would be a lot more steps before deciding anything or whatever. It was very preliminary. Um, the woman just came and gave us a little presentation and showed us on the map how the connection works and everything. Um, so I think that I'm supposed to connect with the chief again on it and then, um, we'd likely have a follow-up meeting with somebody from, on their end who has a little more technical expertise, to kind of walk us through what possibilities exist. And who knows, maybe we say, "Oh, it's too expensive" or "We're not interested," but...
What's the name of the, uh...
Open Cape.
Open Cape.
Yeah, I had never heard of them.
Yes, and there's a lot of, um, communities, in particular, um, police departments, um...
They gave you a list?
I think the Sheriff's Department, yeah. We went through a whole, a whole big list.
Of towns?
Towns and, um, it's different entities within towns, so it's not always all the time, like a whole town government.
We can do some reference checking.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I believe that, I think Duxbury might be on it. Um, I'm not sure, but we can, we can resurrect that list and...
We're gonna look at it. We need to look at it from the campus approach.
Mm-hmm.
Fire, police, library and townhouse.
Right, that'd be great.
And that's what we mentioned to them, um, in passing. That was what prompted her to suggest that her technical person maybe come out, you know, within the next month or so and just look at what we have here and, um, you know, what would the cost be to run, run the cable, like run a conduit from, to all these different buildings? Um, she wasn't sure from a technical perspective, could we all be on one line, like one shared network, or would we need a couple individual connections depending on...
Police would probably want their own, but that's things we can look into.
Right, that's down the road.
Okay.
But just to update you, um...
I would say though, that, that has the potential to blow up into quite a big project.
Sure, sure does.
Meeting, I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, um, with a couple of the town managers that I met at the MMA Conference and they're gonna help me out a little bit with some HR policy development, um, just kind of what's worked in their communities and that sort of thing. And then Thursday afternoon, I have a meeting with the South Shore Managers Group, um, at Bridgewater State, and so that's where I hope to get some information about the surveillance system...
Okay.
...and see what else has been going on. Um, and other than that, I think I can move on to correspondence unless you have any other...
Can I ask you, when you speak with Chief Dillon, to see if he's got any ideas about the surveillance, what we're looking to do?
Yes, and he was on my list as well to talk to, um, because he may know of some good companies, some reputable sources, um, that sort of thing, so...
He returned your call.
What?
He did return your call today.
I know.
Okay.
I get that. He and I have been playing phone tag. Okay, so in correspondence, we have the Best Buddies Challenge Hyanna Support, um, and it's letting us know that it comes through the community, um, and it appears that this needs signature.
This is a bike-a-thon?
Correct.
They do this every year?
Correct.
Yeah, which we do every year.
What's the date?
Uh, June 2nd.
Okay.
I've got the certificates.
Terrific.
That's why they're in the correspondence.
Okay.
So, that'll end up needing signature.
So, do we wanna vote on that?
Sure.
So, I make a motion, will you approve the, uh, the permission to use the town for the Best Buddies Bike-A-Thon Challenge?
All right, um, provided that, uh, police, fire and highway are all informed. Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion. Home favor?
So, do we wanna, uh...
Well, they do this every year.
Do we wanna sign it now or do we wanna wait until we...
Yes, and then I send it and I send it to Jim.
Yeah, that it's, it's provisionally signed based on contingent on approval by everybody else.
So, I think you get to sign that one.
Then we have, um, another item for signature, um, the National MS Society Event Notice. Um, they have events on June 30th and on July 1st. Um, and this also, um, it looks like they're getting a permit from Mastot for this event. Um, and as part of that, this is another, um, bicycle tour. And they need us to sign off and then it goes to our police, our fire, and then eventually to Mastot, which they'll do. Um, but that's for a bike race as well, um, June 30th, July 1st.
What roads are they gonna be on?
They must be on 58 and I'm wondering if it's also 106 at certain points.
There's the page that shows.
Yeah, they need Mastot approval, um...
That sounds like Duxbury.
Plimpton Street Prospect, Winnetuxent Parsonage, 58.
58 Center.
So, they go to Halifax that?
South.
Okay.
I'm okay with this, as long as we don't get overwhelmed. Um, this came up in discussion years ago on how many were due, but, um, I make a motion, will you approve this event notification?
All right, I'll...
It's been the same ones.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Pending, uh, the approval.
Pending approval by police, fire and highway, right.
Um, we were notified, um, by the state with their vegetation management plan, um, for this year and I've also received the notification via email, so I forwarded that to our Conservation Commission, um, so that they would be aware. And then we have the Plimpton Halifax Express, um, began publication. Again, as John mentioned, we have Tales of Old Plimpton in there, um, and also the Silver Lake Regional High School Talent Competition, a lot of great photos from that.
Lot of talent at Silver Lake.
Yes, a very talented group of students.
Absolutely. All right, anything else?
I have a couple of things.
All right, done with correspondence?
Done.
Perfect, okay. All right, what do you have, John?
Um, one for our, I wanna put on, future presentation is a financial presentation that Barbara Gomez and Colleen Moran will give, okay, on the health, financial health of the town.
Okay.
Okay, and Liz will coordinate that and so we'll set it up. So, I just wanna give you a heads up.
So, is that like our financial, internal financial team will be putting this together?
It's actually done by the state. We're just taking their...
Yes, their sort of template and they had a lot of interesting graphics and everything, so Barbara was...
I have all the graphs and I'll send them to you, Liz, so that we can show them from here on your laptop to the...
Can we do that at some point in March?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure. We've been talking about this. First, it was gonna be October, then it was November, now, you know...
Okay, perfect.
One of the things I would like to see us do on the agenda is, we have a lot of open things. So, for instance, uh, we have a Route 106 study that'll just get listed on the agenda. We have a Mastot Safe Roots thing, but that can't list it. More so that we don't lose sight of them and also if there's any updates that we get talked about.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we got the master plan. I think that one for sure should be on there.
Oh, absolutely, and we applied for a couple of grants.
Yep.
Okay.
Also, we made a visit to light control and maybe you guys wanna talk about it, since I've talked about it before.
Could I just back up one thing? Would you like those two topics just to be in a board goals for coming year?
How about updates and discussion?
Updates and discussion is where I'd like to see them.
So, if there is an update, well...
Same way we do fire and EMS and monitoring, Rocky.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that what a, kind of a task sheet is for though? No?
The, right, the parking lot?
Yeah.
No, because we're working on them.
Isn't that what the parking lot is for?
Then why shouldn't these go on the task sheet?
Because these are current.
Right, but so these things...
That we're, we're currently working on.
So, what, why don't we make a separate category that would be, um, potential discussion of ongoing matters or something like that?
I, I, I mean, I, I feel like, um, updates and discussion should be things we're definitely talking about.
You just wanna say maybe ongoing projects and then have a list?
Yes, you could.
I don't care how, as long as they get into where we can discuss and be, and not lose sight of them, because one of the things that drops out is, we need to prioritize for, Liz, the, uh...
Right, right.
What's gonna be the most important.
Right.
Which sounds like the parking lot, which is, you know, what it was originally intended for, kind of.
But we don't, we don't look at it.
Well, we did, or former, uh...
Right, but I got overruled.
Well, do you wanna, on a monthly basis, review the parking lot?
I do, I would put it on every once a month, the first week.
Yeah, we could do the first meeting of the month and do a parking lot review. Wanna do that?
I want to make sure that I put it on the first one of the...
Okay, all right, so why don't...
In which case, it probably should be an attached document to the agenda, so the public is aware.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's do it that way.[1779.12] Let's do it that way. Okay, so we'll do it, our first one will be our first meeting in March.
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
So do it as an attached document to the agenda.
Right, right. Just that, for that one, once a month meeting.
So, Light Control?
I...
Because you, you walked away with an action item.
With what?
An action item?
I did. Well, we visited Light Control. I think we were all quite impressed with the operation, and I'm stunned that such a manufacturing operation is here in Plimpton, and boy, it looked like a smooth operation. They were very, it was really nice for Board of Selectmen, I think, to have further interaction and develop a relationship. The action step was, we brought up that the police station is going to need lighting, and they asked us to give them a little more information. I have since our meeting with Light Control being in touch with Colleen Thompson, the Chair of the Public Safety, she, they meet Thursday evening, and they'll see about getting more info about specs and the like from P3 and/or the architect, and then I'll get that back to Light Control and see if there's any chance that they could help us out. Kind of short notice, I'm not at all sure that the style of stuff they do fits with what we're trying to do, but we'll move it along and see if there's any chance of working together on that.
All right, anything else?
No.
Okay.
We had a meeting with Tom Calder. I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, it was good. We got introduced and everything, so he'll be back in touch with me.
Good, very good. He's a good contact to have.
Absolutely.
All right, Board's Goals for Coming Year, economic development. I don't think we've got, is there anything new to report on that?
Not currently. We're still waiting for those grant applications.
Perfect. Financial management, anything? Well, we're going to set up a meeting for our, to review our financial health.
And I think we got to get the team meetings going.
Okay.
Yeah, we were waiting for Wendy's schedule to level out.
Okay, so that will be soon.
Yes.
All right, public safety.
Subcontractor bids are due Wednesday, 2:00 PM. P3 will be in at 2:05 to open and/or collect those. The biggie is two weeks from Wednesday when the general contractor bids are due, and then the die will be cast.
Very nice. It's moving along really nicely. All right, grants. We have got some grants that we have applied for, to, for the development of a mini master plan for this property, and then also to look at creating a comprehensive permit policy for the town that would go hand in hand with our affordable housing plan, so hopefully we'll get some news on that. Anything on volunteerism?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Rec. Commission.
Yes, opportunities.
Talk to us.
Absolutely. If you're interested, we can find something for you. Technology.
Tara would like to come in, and, and I think, I would like to see her come in and talk about where we are with the general codification. Okay, she's been working on that. It's a big project for her. I think we ought to be aware of what's being done along with the Bylaw Committee, so we need to put that on the agenda. I don't know, we're getting a pretty big agenda, haven't we?
We've got a pretty big agenda for the 26th. I think we ought to try to push stuff off if we can.
Probably the week after.
Okay, that'll be on the first.
Yeah, in March.
The other thing we need to do, and Liz and I have talked about this, is sit down and have a chat with Michael Rodriguez around the amount of time we're getting and the amount of really brain power we're getting in terms of strategy. Comes in, does things, you know, it's more tactical, but like this cable, we really need to think out a bunch of things. We've talked about new computers. We got a grant.
Right, and we still don't have the computers, yeah.
Nothing's happened. We have email addresses. Nothing's happened. We bought a server. It's still, you know, and so I think we have to have a, a sit-down, and Liz is...
I totally think that's true. I, I am beginning to notice that town meeting's coming, that the budget process is going on, and that we maybe need to be a touch careful on, you know, that we got to have three months to get that together, and that some of these things maybe need to go for the end of May, right after town meeting.
We'll have to find out what kind of commitment he can make and make sure that it's in fact something that meets our needs.
I think that's a great idea, and it could be that he doesn't, he no longer really wants to do what we need him to do, and that's fine.
I think we're not a big part of this, but it's a nice part. I think he likes it, but it's just not, we just don't need somebody who shows up and...
We need more than that.
Pulls wires.
Right, okay. Anything else, John?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, we've got some minutes to...
Can I just, the date to remember, just for what it's worth?
Oh, sure.
The Community Preservation Committee Public Hearing on R, the Board of Selectmen Application for Funds for Restoration and Preservation of the Old Townhouse, tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. If the public has comments, it's really important time to let us know because we'll be voting on that application.
Terrific.
Is it tomorrow, is tomorrow at 6:00?
That's, yeah, tomorrow at 6:00 in this room, or in the other room?
I hope it'll be in this room. I guess it depends who else sho, who shows up first.
It would be nice if it's in this room, especially if they could videotape it, but I don't know if it's scheduled. All right, so our next meeting will be 2:26. We do not meet next weekend, or next week, Monday, because it is President's Day, so it'll be two weeks until we're back. On minutes, we've got 12:11, 12:18, and 1:08 for approval today. We'll still be holding the 2:05. We've already approved the executive session minutes, and that was from, what, 1:05 and 1:08, Mark? There were two that we...
1:08 and...
And 2:05?
2:05.
1:08 and 2:05, okay.
Was there one other correspondence from Mrs. Chandler?
Oh, honor, did she want you to...
Oh, yes, thank you. She sent a email, I think you all saw her.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means in terms of, I thought she would be here tonight so we could discuss exactly what she's asking for.
I'm not sure. Was it just that we received her letter?
We received an email where she talked about the fall at the Old Townhouse. She indicated that there was some expenses that took place, like the ambulance, the medical follow-on, pain and suffering, which I'm not sure what it means. And so we really need to have a sit-down with her to say exactly what is it that you're looking for.
I think what we need is to refer the letter to Town Council and to our insurance people.
To Maya.
And I think probably we should have, any discussion should be an executive session at this point as an ongoing legal issue.
I don't have a problem with that, except that I think we ought to first hear from her exactly.
I think that we need the attorney and the insurance people to be, to let us know what the next step is.
Okay, you may be creating something.
I...
No, let's do it. We'll see.
I, 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 I think, well, I'm, I'm really comfortable that we shouldn't do anything until we've heard from expert opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think the die might already be cast.
We need to go back to her and tell her that's the route we're taking.
Yeah.
Okay, that we're in receipt of her correspondence, and that we're going to run it by our insurance agent, and that...
Get back to her.
Get back to her.
Insurance and attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'll respond to her.
Perfect, tell her that, yeah, we're sending it to Council and Insurance for review. Okay, so minutes, we have 12:11, 12:18, and 1:08. So let's start with 12:11. So I just had something minor with just changing under appointments, appoint Paul Gallagher and John Schusted as lieutenants, rather than as lieutenant, and John Schusted as lieutenant, as both of them as lieutenants, and then inserting a period after the following paragraph with 6:15 Art Moran of the Board of Health, just put a period at the end of that, and that's all I had. Anybody else have any?
I was fine.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 11th as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Can I see the one that you changed?
You got it, okay. On 12:18, I just recommended that tax classification public hearing opened, because we opened the hearing, and then I had a typo under the second paragraph under the hearing where the residential exemption was misspelled, just to fix that. And then, isn't Just Right Farm, is that W-R-I-G-H-T?
No.
It is right?
It's a play on words, actually.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure, because I knew that it was formerly Wright.
It used to be Just Right Farm.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. All right, then I had further down on the second page, letter to B, to BOS, how about in support of Fire Chief Warren Borsari? It was just a letter to BOS in support of Fire Chief Warren Borsari.
I think that's good.
And that's all I had on that one. Did anybody have any other changes on that?
I did, under Updates and Discussions on Page 1, the third bullet point probably should read, it says Affordable Housing Plans Edits Were Approved With The Changes Suggested By MR to, rather than protect, it should say to delineate on one of the maps.
Yes.
We already protected.
De, how do you spell delineate?
D-E-L-I-N-d-lin-eate, e-a-t-e.
Okay, delineate, Cato's Ridge and Harry Jason Park, perfect, okay.
Geez, doing the spelling.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the December 12, I'm sorry, December 18th minutes as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we're on to January 5th.
January 8th?
January 8th, oh my gosh. Yeah, January 8th. So I had under Updates and Discussion, Chief Borsari updated BOS on snowstorm. Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy requested appointment to the Emergency Management Team, period. And then under, let's see, John Wilkinson discussed and updated BOS on the recent, it was generator failure, not electrical well pump failure, right?
It was both.
Was it?
The well pump failed too after the generator.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
Okay, so how about we say on the recent generator and well pump, electrical well pump failures?
Yep.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, further down, the one after John Wilkinson, Custodian Steve Saro will be maintaining the building. I think we should just put a point there. I'm not sure the out inside. He's going to do it inside.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the outside.
Well, the whole building might be renovated, hopefully. Okay.
Also, on the next one, I guess this is the vote. He'll perform maintenance duties for the townhouse, Old Townhouse Historical Building, and I guess, I'm sorry, that's all right, and the exterior snow removal of the library, that's all right, leave it the way it is.
Okay. Well, could you have interior snow removal? Should just say, and the snow removal?
Fine.
Okay. And snow removal of the library.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want snow removal to be put on the Historical Society? That's what he was doing before.
We haven't talked about that, so I'm not sure.
He does the Historical Society.
He does it already, yeah.
Right, but do we want to...
Put it in there, it's in minutes, that he does the front steps and the back.
Mr. Saro will perform maintenance, ooh, and there's a typo, maintenance duties for the townhouse, Old Townhouse building. Well, what is maintenance here? Is maintenance shoveling here? So he would be doing the same at the townhouse, at the Old Townhouse Historical Building?
At One Time Mark was going over, Colleen was going over. There was really nobody going over.
All right, well, we don't spell it out for this building, that he's doing it.
Because it was already done at this building by the custodian, whoever was the custodian. Daryl used to do it, yeah.
Perform maintenance duties for the townhouse, Old Townhouse Historical Building, and snow removal for townhouse, Old Townhouse Historical Building, and the library? Does that spell it all out? So he's maintaining the inside of this building and the Old Townhouse, and he's doing snow removal of all three buildings, okay.
And he's fine with it?
His husband, yes.
Yeah, no, but you know he's okay with it.
Yes.
Okay.
Because he's currently doing it now.
We, a while back, it was, we asked him to come in, and it was...
Okay, so why don't you just tweak that so that it shows that he's doing snow removal for all three of the buildings?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so motion to accept the minutes of January 8th as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, on to rants and raves.
I'm sorry, I know that you did your executive session. I wasn't here when you did the, but I still put it in my minutes here, or do I...
Perfect.
Should I have to?
Yeah, put it in your minutes. We accepted the minutes of 1...
8.
1:08 and 2:05 as written.
As written.
All right. Do one of you guys want to go first? Will I write this out for Bree on your rants and raves?
I'll go.
Okay.
I have just a rave. I think the Bylaw Newsletter that's coming out from the committee, Alan and Weelock in specific, is a, a great, great addition. I'm glad to see it. It's an important committee, and I think that highlights some of the work they're doing.
Yeah, they're doing some very important work. All right, do you have something?
Rave, I guess, a good process going on, a lot of work, but moving forward and making progress, so good process and good progress.
All right, my rave would just be again, the great, to have so many people come in. I'm glad Mrs. Atwood came in.
Yes.
It's nice to see things from another, from their perspective, and just to be mindful that, you know, there's, there are many parties involved in this, and to be respectful of each other and their rights throughout this process, and we just need to work together. And I think if we do work together, this really can benefit everyone, that, but unfortunately it will probably be a time-consuming process, but I think in, in the end, that there'll be a lot of people that are very satisfied with the outcome. All right, anything else?
The townhouse looks great.
The floors look super.
The floor is beautiful.
It is.
And Thursday, there'll be some little tweaking in the clerk's office. They might be working out of this room for a little bit.
Okay.
But the carpet's coming in, and I'm going to give a little shout-out to Jay's carpet, because they got this floor done. It's level, it's beautiful.
Very nice. Yeah, it looks really nice.
It does.
Terrific, excellent. Okay, so we won't see you until the 26th. We'll be back then, so, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.